All right, so I will call to order the Rockport Select Board meeting for Monday, May 10, 2021, and we are still working under the pandemic rules. The first item on the agenda is an executive session if someone would like to make the appropriate motion.
I move we convene an executive session pursuant to one MRS Section 405.6A to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, Michelle seconded it. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Michelle?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Go to executive session.
No, I was playing with my dogs, actually. I came back around 5:30, expecting it to be close.
Denise, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here.
Shaw, you're here, too, it looks like.
I am, yeah.
Okay, we're ready, Bruce. Okay, we're back into the public session, having returned from an executive session on personnel matters. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing to receive public comments on the annual town meeting warrant articles that will be voted on by referendum vote on June 8th, 2021. Bill, would you like to add to that? It's 5:36, so we're convening the public hearing portion. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll just note that we have, the town is required to have a public hearing on any referendum articles that will be voted on at town meeting. Obviously, this year, all of the articles are by referendum voting. It is important to note in the public hearing notice that was posted and advertised that we had said if anybody wanted a link to the meeting so that they could comment through this medium, that they would get in contact with Diane Hamilton, my executive assistant, so that they could have the link and/or email me with those comments. I have received no public comments through email, and we did not receive any requests for the public meeting invite as well. And I do not see anything in the live stream comments either. It's also important to note that because this is a referendum election, there could be no changes to any of the articles anyway, because the absentee ballots have already been printed and the ballots themselves have already been printed. So even if we received comments, you know, from a thousand people saying that this article should be changed or whatnot, it could not be changed because of that. It's one of the downfalls of referendum balloting and public hearings and when you can have them. But in this case, we have no comments.
Okay, thank you, Bill. I take it there's no comments from the board at this stage. So we will close the public hearing at 5:38 PM. All right, the next item on the agenda then is the town manager's report slash update. And before we get into that, happy birthday, Bill.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, go ahead, Bill.
Thanks. Just want to highlight a couple of things in the written report. Number one, Laura Poole, who's our technical services and cataloging librarian, she submitted her notice. So her last day is May 11th, tomorrow, she's been with the town for five years. Drew Weber, the Rockport House, Rockport Opera House manager and rental agents, also submitted his resignation, and his last day is June 30th. He's worked with the town for the last three years. And as we've announced previously, Daryl Libby with the Public Works Department will be retiring by the end of May. I actually believe his last day was either last Thursday or this Thursday, and he's taking vacation through May. And so he was with the town for sixteen and a half years. And interestingly enough, when I talked with him last week, he said that he would be taking a Friday off and then a weekend after he's done, and then he would be starting work on Monday at another, at another business. But he's taking his retirement, so good for him, and he's doing something he wants to do and only doing it part-time, so good for him. One other highlight, the Memorial Day Parade will happen this year. It will be obviously different than it has been in previous years. I've been working with Jeff Soukforth with the American Legion. And he's going to be working with Chief Gagne and Chief Peaslee as well. There won't be a band from the high school for obvious reasons, and if anybody shows up to see the parade, that'll be socially distanced, you know, all that sort of thing. They will, the American Legion will place wreaths at the, at Memorial Park, at the Pascal Avenue Bridge, and then at the memorial up at Amesbury Cemetery as well. On Memorial Day, there will be a press release that the American Legion is working on that they're going to share with me that will go out as well.
But usually the garden club marches in the parade, is that something?
They certainly can, they certainly can, just contact Jeff, he can be contacted over at the Camden Police Department.
Okay.
And if anybody else, you know, that you know of or anybody would know that wants to be in the parade and do that, they certainly can contact Jeff at the Camden Police Department.
And I think Dave Barry, is he involved? Because he has been involved in...
I told Jeff about, about Dave Barry. Again, it's not a town function per se, so it's one of those things that hopefully Jeff has contacted Dave Barry and gets involved with that.
Okay, I mean, I just haven't heard anything about this from anyone else, so it's...
Yeah, well, we just started last week to try to give the go, go ahead and get things put together, so.
Okay.
One other thing that's not on my written report, C Street and Elm Street, if you remember last year, they were, they were torn up because of the water line replacement. And then we worked a really good deal of about getting full pavement done for the binder last year. And then we worked a really good deal of about getting full pavement done for the binder last year. Last Friday, both of those streets received their final overlay payment, pavement. So that will come out of this year's construction budget, which is a good thing to get that done ahead of the rest of the construction schedule.
So obviously, we, we send our best wishes to Darryl, Laura, and Drew in their future endeavors and thank them for all their great service to the town over the years. The other thing that I, one question I wanted to ask you, Bill, was on the remote meetings, legislation, LD32. I take it that would apply to committees as well as to, to sort of quasi entities like Midco Solid Waste and so forth too, as well as the select board?
Yeah, that's what it looks like at this point. It's going into a work session anyway, but I think that's the intent of the legislation is to, for every, for every public meeting, basically. And it was well received from the legislature standpoint, because, you know, we've been asking, MMA has been asking for this for years and years and years, and we were rebuffed every time, and then it takes a pandemic, like it has with many other things, for people to realize, oh, yeah, we can actually do this, and it actually makes sense.
Right, well, we've been asking for it on the select board. And you've told, as did Rick before, that, that it's, it's been asked and rebuffed, so that's good. Does anybody else have any questions of, of, I almost called you Rick, I'm sorry, Bill? Okay. Um, okay. The next item on the agenda is public input on non-agenda items. I, do we have any public inputs?
We have none.
Okay, the next item is amendments to the agenda. Any amendments anybody wants to suggest? I don't see anyone suggesting anything. Okay, and then that moves us into the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes for March 22nd, 2021, and the quitclaim deed for JCS LLC.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, Mark seconded it. Any discussion? All right, roll call, Jeff.
Oh, I mean, he has.
Just trying to keep me on my toes, I guess. Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda, action items, is to act on the committee application of Robert Hall to the zoning board of appeals. And at this juncture, I am going to exit the discussion. And per Denise and Bill's discussion, instead of Bob having to come into the waiting room, he will, he will assume my computer and I will not be involved in this discussion.
Hello?
Hi, Bob. So Bob, Bill, would you?
Yep, sure, I will. So we have a vacancy that was on the, on the ZBA that was traded by David Cockey's resignation. And so Bob Hall has expressed, expressed a desire to fill the recent vacancy. He serves on a couple of other committees, the ORC and the Board of Assessment Review as well for the, for the town. There is a conflict in state statute that says that a spouse of a sitting municipal official, meaning select board member, sorry if my dogs are being loud in the background. Sorry, state statute says that any sitting municipal official, meaning select board member, spouse cannot serve on the ZBA. However, my recommendation would be that Bob be appointed to the Board of Appeals effective on June 9th, simply because Deborah's term is ending on June 8th with the election, and she has chosen not to run. I've checked with Phil Saucy, the town's attorney, and that certainly passes muster as long as Deborah, as she stepped away from the discussion anyway, is not party to that, to that vote.
I've had the pleasure of working with Bob on the ORC and also the liaison to the ZBA. And Bob, I think, just brings a lot of willingness to put the time into the work that's needed and is not overbearing. He's a lawyer, so he has the background to provide help and information, but has worked really well with the ORC and gotten us, you know, sort of kept us going on cleaning up some of the land use ordinance provisions. And I think he would be a welcome addition to the ZBA with a lot of the sort of upcoming appeals and complications we have, and I think will work well with the group.
I, I have no, no doubt that he's more than capable. I just don't want to get into another public, public display of less than transparency, I guess. And I mean, if, if Bob were amenable to it, I would just as soon see him wait the thirty days until there is a new board. So that way, there's no, I realize we're dating it June 9th, but we still have a board member that is perhaps influential in the rest of us to choose him or not. I guess I'd be, you know, like I said, I know he's more than qualified, but I'd rather see him come in in June after Deborah has left versus signing him up now, even though it's dated June 9th. I think it just adds another layer of transparency, but that's just me.
I, I don't feel influenced by Deborah. I mean, my, any decision I'd make here would be based on, you know, what I've seen with the good work he's done for the ORC.
Oh, and I, and I agree with that. I'm just saying that, you know, I'm reflecting back to the short-term rental thing where, you know, Deborah and Bob and you had all gotten together and crafted that. So here we are, if, the people aren't going to see the June 9th portion of that. They're just going to see that Bob Hall was accepted on the ZBA with Deborah on the board. They're not going to see that she wasn't part of the conversation. You know, I'm still, there again, I'm only 20%. I just think that if, if he's that interested in, in running and doing the job, that perhaps thirty days or the first meeting in June isn't necessarily out of the question, because I think if the ninth is a Wednesday, the fourteenth, I think, would be our first meeting. So we're only talking about a few days. But that's there again, that's just me.
So Bill, I know you said you talked with Phil, but I, I do, I mean, and I'm sure he gave you obviously the right advice, but I, I would be, I would be concerned only because we're making a decision now that technically does not follow the law, even though we're going to postdate something.
And when you said pass, when you said pass muster, I mean, you know, how close are we on that pass muster? I mean...
Well, again, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have, Deborah would not be voting on the motion. So, and the appointment is not, would not be effective until June 9th. So there is no, there's no concern there for...
So he would, so, so Bob, and I, I don't know Bob, nice to meet you, Bob. So Bob wouldn't be doing work in the capacity of being on that committee until June 9th?
Correct. He would not be, he would not be included in any email communications or any, anything at all. It would just, it would, it would just be as if he was appointed on June 9th.
Jeff, you're awful quiet.
New me. If I could just offer a comment, in terms of the timing, it seems to me that's up to the select board. It doesn't matter to me which way you go. I would like to know what my future is going to be, because I'm anxious to get in and assess the zoning board of appeals. In fact, one of the things I've learned by being on the ORC is that we have some really talented people in these committees. I mean, they're smart, they're experienced, they know what they're doing. They could use a little help in terms of organizing some of the, some of the statutes, rather the ordinances and so on, and to make them flow together well, and I can do that, and I have been doing it on the ORC. And so I look forward to helping the ZBA do exactly the same thing, but in terms of timing, that's up to you. I have no particular axe to grind on that.
Well, I'll make the motion and we can have more discussion. I move the board appoint Robert Hall to the zoning board of appeals effective June 9, 2021, for a term ending in June 2024.
I'll second it.
Hey, so Bill, are we in bounds or are we out of bounds by postdating it?
You're in bounds. No issue according to the town's attorney.
Okay.
Any discussion? I'll do a roll call vote, Mark?
No, with the reasoning of the trans, the additional transparency to the fourteenth of June versus the ninth.
Michelle?
I'm gonna, I'm going to know, I would just rather wait, I think, I know we have approval, but I would rather wait until after.
Jeff?
I too see the need to be squeaky clean on this from a transparency and perception point. This one's a tough one, I want to see Bob on the ZBA in a hurry. But I'm thinking that it could happen at the select board meeting that is post, when the new select board is in place.
Okay.
So I'll formally vote no at this point.
Okay, and I'll vote in favor of Bob being on the ZBA, but I certainly appreciate the points made, and I guess we'll, we'll discuss this at a future meeting.
All right, I'll see you. Thank you.
Okay, and you know, I, I'm going to make one comment, and I think that was that Denise's thought in originally putting this on the agenda this time around was in order so that the ZBA could get their schedule going for some upcoming hearings. But I think that's become rather moot anyway, so I don't know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, so I think that was her thinking.
Well, if it pushes it off, I mean, it pushes it off, that's just how it works.
Yep.
You know, we're sort of in a transition period right now.
Well, I mean, it technically couldn't still do anything until the ninth anyway, which I assume that would mean reviewing material.
No, no, it comes down to scheduling with all the many lawyers, and I mean, it's a lot, it's a big group.
I, I bet that they could still schedule, because I think after the fourteen, you know, we'll be, we'll be in good shape, so.
I think your next meeting is actually, you guys, going to be the June 9th anyway. Just, I know you keep talking about the fourteenth, but I think you are having a substantive meeting on the ninth.
That's an organizational meeting, not a regular meeting.
It's actually not, it's going to be a substantive meeting, as I understand it. There are certain things that are going to be on the agenda according to Denise.
Yeah, we've got a few things that have to be on the agenda that night, just given the timing.
They have to do with midcoast internet, you know, the, the regional utility and so forth, so there's going to be some substance. So whatever you guys do, go, fine. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to act on the Northeast Mobile Health Services contract. Bill?
Yeah, so I'm happy to say that the last, I don't know how many months we've been working on this with Kevin McGinnis's help, and he is here in the meeting to be able to provide some more information on this, that we have a new contract with Northeast Mobile Health Services that will be effective July 1st. It is for one year with additional years, option years, if you will, as we continue working through this EMS regionalization and first responder program. There are several differences to this contract than there were in the last performance-based contract. So that's one of the reasons I had to ask Kevin to come to this meeting so that he could explain those differences and answer any questions that you might have. So I'm just going to turn it over to Kevin at this point.
Thanks, Bill, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, super, thank you. Well, again, this, this contract is within the context of the overall project and the findings of the project that we came to from, from forty-plus interviews and reviews of data in terms of Northeast performance and whatnot. And in the findings, as Bill says, we have a regional planning process, a regionalization planning process moving forward, and a first response unit hopefully being set up. But what we did significantly do with the contract was to work in provisions that address some of the issues that we discovered primarily in the interviews, but backed up with review of data. First of all, the actual contractual performance of Northeast over the last year under the current contract, they checked all the boxes in terms of response times, in terms of getting paramedics on to calls when paramedics were supposed to be on calls, and that sort of thing. Issues that folks have had or have expressed having to do with the use of mutual aid. In 2019, 2020, some folks felt that it was overutilized on occasion. Rumors about difficulties with staffing were all reviewed and were attributed largely to periods when Northeast was unable to maintain a Rockport base manager over a period of three years. There were large gaps where there was nobody in that position. And their medical director for the service was also essentially absent in our findings. And so in the current, in the contract that's proposed, a couple of things that have changed, the, the amount of the contract has gone up about 0.6%, reflecting a CPI, Consumer Price Index increase for New England. And so that's a fairly minor increase, taking it to eighty-four, six forty-three from a eighty-four, one thirty-eight. But in the contract itself, there are a number of sections, and I'm not going to go into the details, the superfine tooth detail of those unless you have questions about them. But they range from reporting issues, how we report performance. And one of the things that is important for us is to realize in EMS that response times are, for most of the vast majority of the calls that an ambulance service does, response times do not relate directly to to patient outcomes. They just, they don't. And so what we built into the contract are several pieces so that for those ten or twenty percent of the patients of the calls where response times, they actually have an impact, that those are being reviewed based on the patient's condition, not on everybody's response time. If we have patients with heart attacks, with strokes, with other things that are time-dependent, then those will be reviewed specifically for response time, response appropriateness, and care appropriateness. And we have put in measures so that to reflect the changing thoughts about response times, to build in some other measures, and I won't go into the details of those, except to say that one of them, which essentially looks at the time and time on average of which ninety-five percent of all the calls are responded, we're going to specifically look at the ones that do not meet that response requirement. So that every one of the calls above that, that didn't get, that didn't meet that time requirement will be looked at individually. We also look in terms of reporting and meeting and communicating with the towns that we need, that a better job needs to be done, that on at least a quarterly basis, the towns, including their chief officials, representatives from the select boards, and then from Northeast, the medical director, doctor, the CEO, the Rockport base manager are all getting together and reviewing all of those performance indicators and making sure that there are no problems occurring or having occurred in the, in the past quarter. And if there are, that they're mitigated, that's the important thing to be looking at. And there are provisions also within the contract to assure that the medical director is in place, the medical director is attending the meetings in the response area. The medical director is attending the meetings um, in the response area, the Camden Rockport response area um, specifically. And that the base supervisor position is always filled, um, and that there are backups to that when things that can't be helped um, cause that not to happen. So um, those are all, uh, I think, important pieces within here. And I think if you look at the detail under the sections that describe operations, that is described, reporting and response times that uh, go to communications, um, leadership communications as well as radio and other communications. You're going to see some improvements there that um, address specific comments that we heard during the uh, during the study. So uh, I think that as a, a contract going forward, um, you can be pretty well rest pretty well assured that there are going to be people looking at this process um, continually. I'm glad to take questions.
I did, I just wanna say that um, thanks, thanks Kevin and your team also for working through this. Um, certainly made the process a lot easier. Um, and I, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of those, well, a few of those things. Number one, the, the response time and how it's changed from when the ambulance is starting to roll to when it's actually called, which I think is a big difference. Um, it eliminates some of that potential gap um, that we, that we saw previously. Um, another one, I know there's been a concern of some members here, select board members. The quarterly meetings are to be scheduled basically a year in advance. So at the beginning of the contract year, um, those meetings will get scheduled so that they will happen instead of waiting for a chair of uh, the review committee to schedule them uh, when they feel like it is, needs to be done. Um, so I think that's important. And the other, the other factor of having an actual medical director um, attending those meetings so they can actually answer questions, um, I think is very important. And then again, requiring supervisor to be, you know, here in Rockport, um, that can be in contact with town officials, fire chief, myself, or the town managers, um, to answer any questions, I think is vitally important to have that built into the contract, so. Um, it, it, we, we probably could have gotten there, we, meaning the, the four town managers and administrators. We probably would have gotten here with Northeast Mobile Health Services at some point, but it made it much, much easier to have gone through the process and have Kevin's assistance with this, so I really do appreciate his service.
Yeah, I think, when I think of where we were a couple of years ago on this, this is really a, um, a great outcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Pleasure.
Let's see.
Thanks. Okay, anything else?
We need to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Right.
So.
I can do the motion.
Okay.
I move the board approve the contract by and between the inhabitants of Rockport and Northeast Mobile Health Services as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Michelle?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark? You're on mute.
I was gonna have conversation on that. I just, and I am gonna vote for it, but I want to see, you know, because we sometimes have difficulty getting our neighboring towns to be on a schedule. Um, I wanna see a firm date for the renewal to start, whether that's January first um, or whatever, but I don't wanna get down to May and then everybody's scrambling, so, but that's a yes for me.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you. Kevin? Um, okay, the next item on the agenda is to act on the resource newsletter policy. Bill?
Yes, so this is another loose end I've been trying to um, get before the select board. Obviously, the newsletter's been in place since uh, last fall, uh, and I felt it was important to have a policy in place to set some guidelines around the, around the um, newsletter and particularly as to what can be submitted for articles. Um, because we don't wanna get into a, a, a period where it's a free-for-all, if you will, where the purpose of the newsletter obviously is to provide information about municipal affairs and upcoming issues and the like. Um, and so I drafted the policy that you have in your packet. Certainly can answer any questions. It's pretty, pretty simple and straightforward, I think.
I just had one. It looks like page two is just totally blank. Which means the table of content is.
There will be blanks built into it simply because of printing back-to-back and that sort of thing, so that's probably what happened there. I think that should, should have said, just left intentionally blank that page after the table.
Yeah, and on slide one, on the table of contents too, you just, it's, it's got an error for your, your formula.
Yeah. That's just.
The purpose really doesn't start until page three, is that right? You have a cover page?
Correct, and the table of content says that.
Okay, then page two will be potentially blank.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I guess I move the board approve the Rockport Resource Newsletter Policy as presented.
Second.
I second it. Um, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, the next item is to write off delinquent personal property taxes. And Mark, you'll be happy to have this on the agenda, I'm sure. Um. Uh, Bill, would you like to say a few things to introduce this?
I will. Um, so per the plan that was created by the tax collector, uh, and myself, to address delinquent personal property taxes, the first step was to review those personal property taxes that were deemed uncollectible, um, whether the business is, is no longer in business, has, has not been in business, or whether the, I, the uh, amounts owed are longer than the statute of limitations allows to be collected. So tax collector Linda Greenlaw had put this list together um, for the board's consideration. You do see it has um, obviously several years. I mean, some of these go back to, I think, two thousand and eleven. Um, well, two thousand and nine actually is the earliest, so you're talking quite a number of years ago. These taxes go back to, so you do have an amount listed at the end of those two columns. Principal of ten thousand two thirty-one eighty-three, uh, interest as of uh, today's date of four thousand three ninety-nine sixty for a total of fourteen thousand six thirty-one forty-three. And Linda, certainly if, if you wanna provide any more, any comments, um, you certainly can do that as well.
No, I think you've covered it quite well. Thank you.
So I wondered, miss, I mean, there's sort of a basic unfairness, of course, with the people who actually pay their personal property taxes and then these people who just sort of welched on it. If any of these people were to come back to the town of Rockport, wanted a permit, wanted to do business in the town, would Bill shaking his head, cuz?
No.
We want nothing to do with them.
I see Mark, I see Mark shaking his head first.
It, it's, we, we can't. I mean, we are so far behind. These ones, we have to throw away. There's fourteen thousand.
And I'm not, but what I'm asking is, um, so if Jason Spear wants to come and open a new business in Rockport, does he just come in and get a business permit and he starts over again and maybe he welches again, or?
Some of these, some of these people have um, uh, other years of delinquent taxes as well that we'll be collecting. Um, but you know, but to answer your question, they are allowed, there's nothing we can do in state statute that allows us to say, issue to deny a permit for any, for any um, delinquent taxes, for instance.
So it's just good faith if people pay personal property taxes and you don't have.
Yeah, I mean, going forward, again, as part of the plan, you know, the tax collector will begin um, filing UCCs with the Secretary of State's office so that then we can protect the town's interest going forward, and those are similar to, you know, to the property tax leads.
So filing basically the property, the personal property that's subject to the tax, then we can.
Then eventually that would get collected if the business were sold or, you know, something along those lines. But we can't deny, you know, a, a business permit or something like that, if, just because the town has written off personal property taxes, or even the, you know, that they're delinquent in, in taxes that we could collect. Same thing with real estate taxes. You couldn't do that either.
And what's, Vicky Duderah comes forward and wants to know legislative initiatives. To have this on your list as a state legislative initiative to consider.
And what's the statute of limitations? Nine years?
Six.
Six.
But one thing I'd like to say is, I wasn't the tax collector way back in those years. And to be honest with you, I have tried for years and years to get support, to get rid of these and haven't obviously received the support that I needed. I was the deputy tax collector, not the tax collector, so unfortunately it wasn't my responsibility.
Okay.
Anything else?
Move the board determine that the list of per- personal property taxes presented are uncollectible due to age and/or the fact that businesses no longer exist and that the town write these amounts off as such.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
And we, can we assume perhaps that our second meeting in May, there might be a resolution to this brought forward to us? So that we can, on the twenty-seventh of May, ship the paperwork out and get things in motion?
Don't think the board needs to take any action for the rest of the plan until we get to later dates.
So what um, so what are your plans, I guess? Um, after this evening's meetings, when, when can we expect something going out to those that are, you know, before we get into the next year and we have to waive the sixth year off again?
Yeah, so I would say that the next steps in the plan that we put together, um, include the tax collector sending demand notices, um, which is a, a key step in the process when it comes to the court filings. So that would be the next step, and I guess I'll leave that to Linda that, to answer the question as to the, to when that would be happening, but that doesn't need board approval.
No, I would say within the next two weeks, I should be able to get out the certified letters for those uh, personal property taxes that are outstanding.
And we will need to run that letter by the attorneys just to make sure we have it worded correctly, so that, you know, the, the goal is to, is to eventually go to court with those ones that don't pay up, when they, when they get the demand letters. We wanna make sure that it's worded correctly.
So, so not that I wanna, you know, I'm a big date guy, so I, I don't wanna pin anybody down, but the twenty-first is a Friday, that's two weeks from, that's two full weeks. Can we expect that they will go out on the twenty-first? I mean, I, you know, this is something we need to be up on more than we have been, and I don't mean to be pushy about the dates, but you know, I'm not gonna let this one just fall by the wayside.
The only thing I would say there, Mark, is that it's difficult to say, yes, the letters are gonna go out by the twenty-first, because we do have to draft it. We have to get the list together. We have to run the letter by the attorneys to make sure we have it worded correctly. And then it all depends on the amount of work in the office. I mean, it, you know, if, if the front counter's busy, if employees are out on sick time or whatever, then, you know, we, so it's hard to put a date on it, but I would, I mean, Linda has said that she'd like to get them done in the next two weeks, so.
Perfect.
Me, to me, I think that that works.
Thank you both.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call, Michelle?
Yes.
Denise? Denise? You're on.
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so the uh, last, I think, item, um, under action items is to consider acting on testimony against LD two fourteen and LD fourteen sixteen regarding removal of qualified immunity for law enforcement. Um, this arose, I think you know, because I had read in the paper about these, uh, the pending legislation to remove the remove qualified um, immunity for law enforcement, something that's enjoyed by all other um, uh, munis- municipal officials, including ourselves. And um, I, I expressed concern about this, as you know, to Bill. Um, Bill had come back to me and said that MMA had taken a neutral position on it. MMA has its reasons for taking a neutral position, not because they wanna see uh, qualified immunity um, removed, but just from a tactical standpoint. But in my communications with MMA, when I questioned them about their um, position on this, uh, just so that I could know and understand what it was, they came back and said that uh, we suggest that you strenuous, strenuously vigorously uh, oppose it. Um, that they are, you know, continuing to try to take the strategic position that they are, but they think that it's important for municipalities to oppose it. I had volunteered that I would write some testimony, which I did, and it's in your materials. Um, and, you know, up to you guys, obviously, if you want to submit testimony opposing this legislation.
Deborah, I, well, I appreciate you reaching out, uh, as I know you did with Randy, and, and this is such yeah, um, the people that are, that are pondering this, um, obviously have never you know, they might have a cousin or a distant aunt or something that might have been a, a law enforcement officer, but uh, unless you've actually been out there, uh, regardless of whether it's Rockport or Detroit. You know, those types of protections need to remain. Um, you know, if you, if you are uh, a screw-up and you violate a law or a policy, you will be terminated. Um, you know, so, but we don't, we don't need to make it so that people are gonna be second guessing everything that they do, because then you're gonna have people that are in law enforcement get hurt.
Yeah, and I was gonna say that, uh, not only can you be fired, but uh, you can be prosecuted, and um, I used as I've said to some of you guys in my early career, I spent many years uh, def- uh, defending state government against um, frivolous nineteen eight, forty-two USC nineteen eighty-three actions, and um, the quickest way to lose your good law enforcement is not to, um, not to not to give them qualified immunity. It's there for a reason, a good reason. Um, Michelle, did you wanna say something?
No, I, I was just gonna say, I think, you know, we're already in a very difficult situation with retaining and attracting um, police officers for public safety. And uh, you know, a, a situation like this where we're now saying, great, we want you to do this job, we want you to put your life in harm's way, but, oh hey, you're gonna be on your own if something happens. So um, I, I appreciate, Deborah, you taking the time to do the research. Um, I, I really liked the write-up, um, and I am in full support of that.
Anybody else? Uh, that leaves Denise or Jeff. Uh, not seeing anything.
No, I'm good.
Good, okay. All right, so if somebody would like to make a motion?
I move the board approve the testimony for the State Legislative Judiciary Committee as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, thank you.
And I vote yes, and um, Bill, will you make sure that this uh, gets um, sent to the proper places as our testimony opposing these two bills?
Yep, I'm gonna send it tonight, actually, after the meeting.
Okay, and I would suggest it, um, if it's okay with the rest of the board, I would suggest that you might want to circulate it to some of our other Knox County uh, towns, town managers, because uh, perhaps along with the testimony. Um, because the more that we can uh, we can have in terms of uh, opposition to this, the better. And we're all affected because obviously, uh, you know, the sheriff's department here is, you know, is affected just uh, as is our own municipal um, police department. Okay, sounds good to everybody? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Great. Um, okay, the um, the next uh, item on the agenda is select liaison reports, if somebody would like to go first?
I'll, I'll go first.
Right.
Um, I have a, just a quick update. So West Rockport Fire Station has not met. Um, the planning committee has not met, I think, since we last met. Um, and so comprehensive plan, I know Jeff, you weren't on the last meeting, so I'll take that. Um, we did meet last week. We discussed the survey questions, thanks to those committees that have responded. I think the first round, we I think the first round, we have realized our questions are probably a little bit too broad, and I know Deborah, you were one that responded, so thank you. So we're, we're doing some additional updates and tweaking to those questions, looking for some, some logos and some branding as we get further down the road, but that group's doing a lot of work and, and coming up with some great ideas to make sure that we're getting the feedback from, from the community. So more to come on that.
Next.
Got a practice meeting coming up on the twelfth and a conservation meeting coming up on the thirteenth. So I'll have something for you the next time around.
Yeah, same with me. All my committees are meeting, haven't met since the last select board meeting.
The activities around the pathways committee, they spent the last meeting last week generating responses to the compliance survey. That's really what I've got.
Great. Um, I think, uh, let, let's see, Midco Solid Waste did meet, there was nothing of any particular import to, to report on. The, um, uh, that's solid waste, the Midco Internet Coalition meets on Wednesday. As you know, the warrant article is on the agenda for June eighth. We're hoping that on June ninth, we need to, we need to act quickly in doing a couple of things, approving articles of incorporation. And actually, if the vote passes to form the regional utility, then we would need the board to, at their meeting on June ninth, to authorize the board to sign, the chair, the then-chair of the board to sign off on that interlocal agreement. So there's just a couple of housekeeping things that we need to have you do on the ninth, which is what I was referencing earlier. I think that's it in terms of liaison items for me.
I would just add one last thing if I could, because I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but it's been probably nine months since we've had our EMS committee meeting and we're supposed to have it quarterly. And Mark Ratner has yet to set a date. And I did speak with Bill and, and Deborah about that. So hopefully Mark will find time to coordinate with a date for us to meet before we go too long.
Well, and I just, you know, and one of my parting thoughts here, I would like, I mean, I, I think that we need to be a little bit more vigilant about, you know, elections of chairs and all that sort of thing. And this is not in any way extremism of Mark or anything, Mark Ratner or anything, but but, you know, we, uh, we, we do have, require our committees, whether it's a ZBA or it's the, you know, or it's a multi-town effort like that to have elections every year. And I know that's something that we perhaps need to be a little bit more vigilant about in some of our groups.
Well, I was a little disheartened when the comment was that their manager had reached out to a few people. And the only three people in Rockport, being Bill, Deborah and myself, weren't any of the few people that were reached out to about having a meeting. So, you know, I'm, I'm a little skeptical about a lot of things, but anyway, maybe we can.
Yeah, well, I know some of our other towns in the group, Mark, are very much in favor of having a meeting too, so.
Good.
So, uh, I think that there's some organization that needs to be done better in the future in that group. Okay, anything else? All right, Bill, did you have anything to add other than your birthday plans?
Yeah, I'll be sending legislation to the judiciary committee. And I've got some things to send out to Jeff, and I guess that'll be my birthday plans for the night.
You know how to live it up.
Yeah. It does. All right, um, so we will be having a meeting on, uh, May twenty-fourth, my last meeting, Jeff's last meeting. And, uh, not that I'm gleeful about that, but I can't tell you, sorry. Sorry, guys.
In my last meeting as well.
Yes, and your last. So a lot of short timers here. Okay, um, with that, uh, somebody want to motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call, Michelle?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Have a good night.